Twenty twenty five. Pam, can we have attendance?
Sure. Robert Romer?
Here.
Michael Gore?
Here.
James Barr?
Here.
Austin Gruner?
Here.
Michael Lau?
Here.
Eric Nyland is up soon as of right now.
Okay. I think we can expect him eventually. Okay, so why don't we get started? A relatively well theoretically light agenda. No hearings. So the first item is the Forbush Mill study area. Pam, you want to bring us up to speed on where things are on that?
Sure. So. I completed the inventory maps and. Property data sheets. This is an overall inventory. Of the project area, all the map and parcels, and then I color coded them with a legend down at the bottom. So we can identify permanently protected area. Um, that we can't really do anything with because some of the land is protected under Article ninety seven. As permanent open space. Um. I included one. Let me just pull up what you can see because it's very difficult for me to. Okay, I pulled up on. There was a single family home kind of on the outskirts of the study area, so I labeled it as red saying maybe we consider eliminating it. Eleven are properties with. Um, potential for expanding land uses or zone changes that are within the study area and blue is. Town of Bolton owned land without conservation restriction or use restrictions on them. Um. When. I figure out how we can color code the map so it coincides with the colors. Um, on the table and then the property sheets, they're all inventoried and done. And there's coordinating maps for each parcel on an individual basis. It includes wellhead protection areas. Any wetland resources, aerial photos and zoning maps. It explains what's on the property in terms of contours. Wetlands. Current structures, their sizes, whether the zone is, whether the current use is conforming or not, and whether the lots themselves are conforming or not. Um. So I think we have a pretty good inventory of existing conditions right now.
Okay. And in terms of next steps. Um, I think. We certainly want to get the landowners involved and let them at least know what we're doing.
Yes.
Um, and how would you recommend that we do that?
I think we can send them all a letter, let them know we're interested in evaluating the zoning in this parcel. In this um, area that they own property in and invite them to provide us with input. With a meeting invitation, whether we want to do that in person. Um. Or online is really up to the board.
And there's just the one residential law.
Well, I'd like to start having a person meetings pretty soon.
I'm sorry, what's that?
I'm sorry, question?
I just had one question. So. Of all the properties listed in the study, I think you said there was just the one residential. No, is that okay?
No, there's a few, but some of them. Along Main Street, like one had a pretty significant home occupation abutting it, which entailed a. Accessory structure that's utilized as a garage and a repair shop. Um, so those types of things can have the possible, can be possibly considered. I thought for economic development opportunities. Um, so those were given a yellow indication.
Okay, well, there is.
But it's current residentially zoned and.
They are currently residentially zoned.
Awesome, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sorry if there's a delay on my end or something. I'm not sure. There might be, but. Um, there was one in the color code, Pam. One of those was color coded red. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I missed that.
It's this. This one, it's on the outskirts of the study area. Uh, it has a river running through it and it's a conforming residential. Use. So I, I suggested we consider maybe removing that from the study area. There's not much additional uses you can do with the property because it does conform, but um. And that the stream kind of limits what you can do.
Yeah, I think that makes sense to me, Pam.
Yes, I would agree. Pam, where do things stand with respect to? The drive that we've moved from Google to Microsoft.
Yeah, I had some issues with that um, over the weekend and then in the beginning of the week, but I think we have it all under control and just prior to the meeting. I sent out a new link to the planning board folder. So I'm hoping that goes through and all the documents are there and I've added these. Um. I was working on, on them on my desktop just until that was complete. So I've uploaded the new revised documents. And they should be there and you should be able to view and edit them.
Okay, and you sent us a link to that?
Yes, I just, I literally just did around seven o'clock.
Okay, that's great. So I think next steps. Let's have everybody digest this. Um, you know, thank you very much. This is phenomenal. Um, it's beyond anything that we did in our pilot study at the intersection of one seventeen and four ninety five. Um, provides an awful lot more data, real data. Um, in detail. And then in the next meeting, discuss when we want to have a meeting with everybody involved. And to lay out what the approach is, and I'm not sure we want to get into recommendations. Other than what our objective is to take a look at economic development of this area and a potential rezone of some portions of it.
I think we also discussed at the last meeting inviting the EDC.
Right.
Um, to a joint meeting with the board. We had a meeting scheduled for Monday, but we had to reschedule it due to people's availability. So it will be occurring now on the fifteenth and I'll try and get um, dates while they'll be able to join you.
So could they join us for the next meeting, our next meeting?
I'll find out. I don't.
Yeah, it'd be great to have them. You know, all members of the EDC. Um, directly involved.
I also wanted to see, we have the public hearing scheduled for seven thirty at our next meeting, so I wanted to see if maybe we could, if they can come, if we could meet prior to that. Instead of after, because I'm not sure how long that public hearing will go.
Okay, so do you want to start at seven?
Yeah. If everyone's available, I think that would work a little better.
Yeah, I kind of like seven anyway.
I'm fine with that. That's fine.
Okay, so let's do that. And then we're set up for the Stevenson land at seven thirty?
Yes, there's, they were continued um. At seven thirty. You should have received the peer review. Reports in the last email I sent out.
I saw that.
Okay, and.
Is Eric planning the planning board and the EDC by the way? Eric, okay.
Yes, he is.
How, how does that work if he? Would he act in as an EDC member or a planning board member or both during the same meeting?
Um, he could represent both. I don't see a problem on that. It's just a joint meeting because he represents both. He can. Partake in discussion from both sides.
Gotcha, just curious.
Yeah, I view it as, you know, we have the same objective, I think, and it ought to be hopefully very collaborative. And they may have interesting additional input that we haven't taken into consideration. Um, since they've been working. Looking at this kind of thing for some time at both ends of town and in the middle. Um, so they can bring to bear that perspective. Um, with respect to. The hearing um, on the Stevenson land. Um. I'm not sure I've seen the drainage report. Has that?
It's on the website, um, due to the file size. I couldn't email it out. Yeah, it was, it was submitted with the last revision, so it's all accessible under current.
Okay, I apologize.
It's okay.
Yeah, I think that's. Certainly one of the most critical aspects of this, considering the land and the slope and. The perk rates and a bunch of.
Yeah, I agree, yeah.
Yeah, and. Yeah, anyway, it's. It's a classic case of. The remaining um, developable land in Bolton is not nice, smooth, level, flat and good soil. So. Okay, um. Land use table review. I mean, that's. Where we stand on this.
Well, that was um. There's edits in the Google Drive. Not too many, but. Just added some land use categories.
Do you have that? Could you just bring that up or?
Yes.
Now, this new drive is a Microsoft drive?
Yeah, Microsoft, it's called OneDrive. It's Microsoft three, part of Microsoft three sixty five, I believe.
Okay.
I honestly don't know too much about it. I haven't used it before. I think it's pretty similar to the Google Drive, but it's just allows you to share Microsoft software stuff.
Been around for a long time, but it's not very good, in my opinion.
Oh.
So much, yeah, Google's so much better for it.
I love Google.
Share with people. Yeah, it's unfortunate.
I migrated from Dropbox to Google because it was so much better.
Yeah.
Oh, that's sad to hear.
It'll, it'll make you log in with a Microsoft account. I mean, Google sometimes does that too, but just. Watch out for that. It's permissions are weird.
All right, well, please let me know pretty quickly if you have any trouble accessing it.
Any foreign computer or anything else like that, they ask you for uh, verification. It's, it's. It's tough sometimes.
Maybe too, I can just set up a town planning board Gmail account for us to. Share documents at least, um.
Yeah.
If it doesn't work out.
Probably get used to it. If this is how they want to do everything moving forward, then we'll, we'll get used to it. Just. There's some quirks to it.
All right, just let me know if you have some issues.
Okay.
We love your point. Everything cloud based there. It's all going to cloud base where, you know, you, you, you don't have um, actual drives. Anymore. Everything is uh, logging on to some sort of a SharePoint, which is.
Okay.
Have Outlook, all your, you know, teams, everything else like that.
So just keeping track of who I am and what I'm. Signing in with. Google, Microsoft. Anyway. I guess we'll all learn how to do that. And eventually there'd just be one massive one. Okay, can you, do you want to bring that up or?
Oh, I thought I did, sorry. It's on my screen. So just some additions of some categories. I didn't change any. Permissions or whether things are allowed by special permit or yes or no, but those are probably things we want to take a look at. Um. Some uses that weren't really clarified that. Are pretty popular, like breweries, um. Personal service establishments. We didn't have a category for that would cover things like spas and. Man, you know, manicurists, nail salons, that type of thing, event venues, um. The school categories and daycare system shop is edited, but it is. We put those in there, um. And the districts. I didn't make any amendments to. I figured this would change as we go through. The Forbush Mill assessment area as well.
Yep. Yeah, I think it's very valuable to start with what's there and what might be proposed for economic development and then figure out how we can. Fit it in.
Yeah.
And clearly delimited. Okay, so that'll be.
That's in the link too, just so you can. If something um. Comes to mind that you want to add in a comment or change then. If I haven't done that yet, honestly, in this Microsoft program, but I.
But it has the same sort of facility as.
I think so, but I can't say for sure. You can show comments and. I tracks changes, so I, I think it'd. Be okay, pretty similar to Word.
Oh, okay. I would expect it to be very similar to Word.
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll take a look at that as well. And learn how to use. Microsoft three sixty five. In the cloud.
Yeah, everything's still in the, the Google Drive. It, it will be active for a little while longer, but. Now that everything's kind of transitioned over. To this, um, I think it's only available for another week, you said.
Okay.
So if you are able to get in there, it probably will be short lived.
Are they doing this to switch the town webs, as part of the town website switch over? Is that?
They're separate things, but both are occurred.
Okay.
That's us, a company program update, I think, for the website that they're doing. They're, they're changing all. Virtual town hall clients to this new format.
Hmm. Okay. Thank you for that. Shall we move on to review of minutes? On July twenty fifth. Were there any comments on it? I head to their microscopic. They don't change the meeting at all.
I will make a motion to approve the planning board minutes from June twenty fifth, twenty twenty five.
I guess.
Robert Romer?
Hi.
Michael Gore?
Hi.
Austin Gruner?
Hi.
Michael Lau?
Hi.
And James Barr?
Hi.
Minutes approved by a vote of five to zero.
Okay, any other?
You want to give me those changes now or do you want to email them to me?
Um, hold on, let me just, I actually had it up here. They, like I said, they were microscopic. I'm embarrassed. Um. First sentence, um, common driver of public hearing was opened, ED. And then just down on the second page, fifth paragraph. Again. Microscopic, Dan Breslin, comma, one sixteen, water, Quaticill Road, comma. And that was it. Otherwise, it was terrific. Thank you very much. I just wanted to show you I read it. Okay. Then with that, do I hear a motion for adjournment?
Um, real quick on the uh. So the EDC discussion, that was going to be for. The Forbush Mill area, right? I know we talked about the EDC over by the. Um. On the east side of town with all that property, but we're not, we're not getting into that this year, right?
No, but I think, I think it's worthy of. A conversation. I don't know whether, I know EDC has. At least some members have walked through that facility. Um, and has generally been under some consideration, but no proactive effort at all on it, to the best of my knowledge. Um. But I do think that's something that is a great opportunity. Um, and it's not going to happen by itself.
Yeah.
The, the property owner of the remaining vacant land, are you, you're talking about fifty eight Main Street, right, Mike? The industrial zone, um. He, he's looking to divide those parcels and sell them off, so I think now is, would be actually a good time to look at that and the allowed uses. He's open to um, discussion and consider town input. Um, he's trying to create something that fits into our zoning, but I think he has other ideas which. Wouldn't be bad fits for the property if zoning allowed it.
Okay, then, that's right. That is an opportunity. You know, I don't want to do everything. Overwhelm us and not move forward on specific. Objectives, but I think to get things going and understanding EDC's perspective and what you've learned from the owner. Um, would be very valuable.
And, and not all of it's, it's, some of it's just tweaking some things in the land use table. Um, so I don't think it necessarily has to be huge bylaw changes, but I do think it's something we should. Take a look at and see what we can. Do to help aid in the development of the property.
Yeah.
We also have the uh, huge athletic complex going in down the road in Stowe. Um. Which may affect development of the area and economic opportunities, so I think it's a great time to take a look at that.
Is that an athletic complex or a private school?
It's a, it's called an athletics. School, but it, it's a. Athletic complex, but it's a private school that has an athletic focus, so athletic training is incorporated into the. Curriculum and they have, um, they're going to also be the home for the Olympic fencing team for the United States. Um.
Oh. That's, that's, I'm impressed.
Yeah.
It, it's an interesting location for it. I didn't know that uh, fencing was big around here, but yeah.
Yeah, I think they recently closed. Their, the fencing um, complex I'm talking about recently closed wherever they were located, so they chose this. Complex to relocate.
Austin, you must still be new to town. Everybody fences in Bolton.
Everybody's.
I think you're talking about between properties, right?
Bad pun.
Well, okay, with that.
Uh, if there's nothing else, I will make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
I always make it just in time to adjourn.
Yeah.
Thanks, Eric. We appreciate your service.
I am doing really good for you guys. Hopefully you appreciate it.
Oh, we do, we do.
Yeah, okay. Okay. Have a good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Good night.